So, thank you. All right. Thank you all for being with us. We'll want to welcome you all to the November 19th, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission, and let's begin our meeting with... All right, it's gonna be that kind of meeting. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask you all to rise and join us in the pledge, and if our friends from the Scouts would like to start us off, that would be great.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And I do want to acknowledge our folks from the scouting community who are here this evening, Henry and Michael from the Scouts, and the Scout Leader, Mark Puzerewski, I hope I'm pronouncing that pretty close. So, they were here this evening to talk to some of the Commissioners about local government as part of their scouting work, so I thank you all for being here. And what troop are you with? Troop 77. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for being with us. All right, I got a couple of announcements. Actually, before we do that, before we do the announcements, between now and our next commission meeting, we're gonna, as a community and a country, next week celebrate Thanksgiving. So, before we start our meeting this evening, I wanted to ask each of the Commissioners if they would like to share something that they are thankful for at this time. So, I'm gonna start over on this side with Commissioner Edwards.
Oh, I was not expecting you.
Just feel free to share just a couple of words.
I was not expecting you to go first. I'll be brief. I am incredibly thankful for my family. My husband works with children all day and changes their lives, and I'm very grateful for that, as well as our 13-year-old son, who keeps me on my toes and laughing, and also our host of pets that just kind of show up at our back door, and we take them in, and they love us unconditionally.
I'm thankful for, you know, every year Thanksgiving now, and especially now, since my parents aren't with me, I'm more thankful for them as I think about how fortunate I was to have people like them to raise me and to bring me up, and to, they are really responsible for me being the man I am today. And they're the ones who gave me a moral compass in how to be a father, a grandfather, and a member of the community, and to care for others, and to always make sure that Al is not always first. And that's stuck with me all these years. And the older I get, the more thankful I am for them, and the way they brought us up, and with the faith. And when I look at the barriers I've overcome over the years, I go right back to them, and who they were, and to see their sons, grandsons, and what has happened to all of our family. But most important of all, they've really taught me, and as being a Commissioner, is not only how to be a good man, but also how to be a good citizen, and how to respect other people.
Well said, Commissioners. I'm, gosh, I'm grateful for a lot of things. So, Brownie, this is very risky, you give me the mic on this, but, you know, I have to say, as a, like Commissioner Whiteside, as a young man, my wife and I were talking about, actually today, you know, how very little materially that we had, and how it didn't, it just didn't matter. It was the love that our family and our extended family had for us, and that we had for others that made the difference. And it was, you know, having the direction of, you know, being exposed to the, you know, the faith of Christ early as a young man, and the difference it made in my life. But, you know, now, as an older, you know, in my older years, you know, appreciating our children and our grandchildren, and, you know, my kids are 36, 33-years-old, you know, and my, my wife of 44-years, I'm so grateful for all the family, and I am thankful for the opportunity to serve, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve with these Commissioners that I have to my left and my right. They are, they're all good people. We have different ideas, but I'm grateful for the opportunity, the process, to be able to come together and to discuss things that we sometimes agree on, sometimes we disagree on. But I'm grateful for the freedom that we have in our country to be able to do that, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to be grateful tonight. So, thank you. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm also thankful for my friends and family. I'm thankful to live in this beautiful part of the country. As a county, in my role as County Commissioner, I'm thankful to our county employees who show up every day and do a great job, and make a difference in people's lives in this community. And I'm also thankful to the citizens who provide us with an opportunity to serve, and who are engaged in helping to make our community a better place.
As everyone, I'm thankful for my family. I am so thankful of what I have been blessed with over my 60-years that I've been here. And as part of serving as a Commissioner, is see these young men on the front row here. I hope that the next 50-years for y'all is as great as me of what I have been able to do, and it starts right here with our kid. And that's part of what I'm very thankful for, that I'm able to serve here and be a small part of what Buncombe County future is gonna be, and hope that I make an impact on a lot of people. Thank you.
I'm like everyone else. Without family, you don't really have a whole lot. My family supports me. My wife, 47-years, I don't know how she's put up with me that long. My two daughters and my grandson. But I am proud of these young men sitting out here. That's how we need to come up. We have a lot of kids that are not coming up in that respect, and I'd really love to see that happen for them. I've been here almost seven-years. I've seen a lot of things happening in this area. Working very hard for poor people, and I'm working very hard for the elderly. We had an issue the other week that, thank God, I've had good help, that got it fixed. It was a bad issue, and it is fixed today. It hurt me for us in the health area. But other than that, I want to thank the people of Buncombe County, not just District 2, the people, because there's 300-and-so-thousand that we all work for. But, you know, I'm like, amended is, we have three animals. That's our kids today, and they love us, and we love them. So, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you all for sharing. And before we start our meeting this evening, I'd just invite us to have just a moment of silence so that we can all briefly reflect on all that we have to be thankful for as individuals and a community at this time. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We have a couple of announcements to go through. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes for folks who are attending the commission meeting this evening. If you parked in the joining county parking garage or used Asheville Transit to travel to the meeting, your passes can be validated from one of the officers who is serving us this evening. Feel free to see them on your way out. I'm gonna read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? All right. There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board this evening. Are there any questions on the, about any item on the consent agenda first from Commissioners? Are there any questions from Commissioners? Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? All right. We are going to have a closed session, and I would like to request that we have the closed session immediately following the approval... Actually, I would suggest we do the consent agenda immediately following the presentation on the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. So, we'll do that, I think, and then we'll have the closed session. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published, including a closed session following the presentations?
Commissioner, do you need to note that the Good News section has been canceled today?
That's right. Yeah. So, the Good News section is not gonna be on the agenda this evening, so we will not, there won't be any presentation on that item this evening. Thank you.
Chairman?
Thank you. Yes.
These young gentlemen, I don't know if they just want to speak, but they got papers in their hands.
No, they, I had the privilege of being interviewed by these gentlemen, you know, earlier, so it was fun. I think they've done their work. Y'all's eyes got about that big.
Okay. And our attorney will talk to us about the contents of the closed session when we get to that. But is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published, noting that the 4-H item will not be on the agenda, but we will have a closed session following the presentation section?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, we do have a presentation from, about the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and I believe got a couple people here to present this item to us. So, thank you for being with us.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Gene Knofel, and this is Susan Schaber, and we're here this evening to enlighten you about the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature, which for the sake of brevity, we'll just use the term Senior Legislature. This body was created by the General Assembly in 1993 for the purposes of providing information to senior citizens on the legislative process and matters before the General Assembly that would impact them, promoting citizen involvement and advocacy concerning aging issues before the General Assembly, and to assess the legislative needs of older Americans by convening a forum modeled after the General Assembly. Each of the 100 North Carolina counties is entitled to one delegate and one alternate, and they must be 60-years or older. The State Division of Aging and Adult Services provides staff support in cooperation with the state's 16-area agencies on aging, who are responsible for the recommendation of delegates and alternates to a county's governing body. Through the recommendation of our local area agency on aging at the Land of Sky Regional Council, you appointed me as a county's delegate and Susan as the county's alternate. Let me say, we, both of us want to thank you for your confidence in our representing you and the seniors of Buncombe County. We're here this evening to provide a brief background on the aging situation in the county and how the Senior Legislature is providing assistance to our senior citizens, or as some say, seasoned citizens. We face many challenges as we prepare to meet the needs and demands of a rapidly growing aging population. North Carolina now has the ninth-largest population of people age 60 and over, and the county has a state, or the statewide average is 22%, and Buncombe County is 26% and growing. And interestingly, there are now more county residents over age 60 than there are under age 17. This disproportionate population of older adults is waiting for services such as meals on wheels, in-home aid, senior citizens, senior centers, and other services that help them remain active, independent, healthy in their communities. Together, you and the Senior Legislature are at work creating a Buncombe County where seniors can age with dignity and respect. Each of us plays in a very important role in making this happen. To start with, each of us needs to commence thinking about our own aging, and that of our parents and other family members, and then planning to meet those future needs. To do this, we need to reflect on housing, healthcare, nutrition, and financial planning.
It is the Senior Tar Heel Legislature's desire to help in any way possible to assist in preparing for these needs. We have the following priorities for 2019. First, increase funding for home and community care, block grants, maintaining and increasing funding for senior centers, increasing and funding project care, which is caregiver alternatives to running on empty. We would like to strengthen and fund the Adult Protective Services Program and implement a staff-to-patient ratio in skilled nursing communities. Lastly, of importance, the Senior Legislature has an organization attached to it called Friends of the North Carolina Tar Heels Incorporated, or Friends, as we call it. It's a 501(c)(3) corporation established for charitable and educational purposes to provide support to the Senior Legislature based on available resources. Friends is comprised of a delegate or alternate appointed by each of the 16-area agency on aging. They are all volunteers, and elect from within a board of directors to govern them. This year, Gene has the honor and privilege of being elected as President of Friends. Friends gets financial support from endowments, bequests, personal donations, grants, gifts, fundraising, and memorials. Friends accomplishments include providing some financial support for delegates and alternates who have no funding for their meeting attendance, providing financial support for the Senior Legislature's meeting venues as needed, paying for printing a directory of all the Senior Legislators, legislators, reimbursement for speakers and training as required by the Senior Legislature's Executive Committee, and providing buses to transport delegates and alternates to the General Assembly in March for every long session to lobby for our priorities.
In closing, we want to thank you for your time and interest this evening, and want to thank you for the funding you provide through the Land of Sky for us to participate in the Senior Legislature. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All right, Gene and Susan, thank you so much for being here to provide us some updates. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
I just have one comment. I would love to have the detail from your presentation, if you could either email it or provide it to our clerk so it could be distributed to the, I mean, I would personally love it, and I'm sure the other Commissioners would probably like to have that information as well. So, if you have a copy of it, you can just leave it with our clerk, and they'll make sure we get copies of it.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, I do want to say thank you to Gene for serving as Chair this year. That is a big deal across the state to have the representation here in Buncombe County, so I would love to give him a round of applause for that.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you again. Okay. All right. We're gonna do our closed session now. I'm gonna look to Ms. Hockaday for some information about the purpose of the closed session.
We need the motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3 for the purposes of consulting with an attorney retained by the public body regarding the matter of the County of Buncombe versus Joe Wiseman, Court File Number 18CVS4206.
So moved.
All right. There's a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're in closed session. I do not anticipate this will be a long closed session, so we'll be back in just a few moments.
In the day, we're even for people, and we're giving the views. Come up here, sit in here, and provide the love. You get to change your view. If you're sitting here and you're dying to love, you have to change your view. I like getting paid overtime.
I heard you won reelection.
About that. I don't know. We're gonna have her.
I'm hungry.
You got a number. Some time ago, I'm gonna tell you a story about Ron Allen's car after he quit being a judge and what happened to him because he had a J tag on it.
Oh, my God.
All right, Commission, is there a motion to go back into, um, is there a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session. All right, I'd like to, um, the next item on our agenda is consideration of a legal settlement, and I'd like to ask Attorney Ron Payne to provide an update to the Commission in regards to the county's civil suit against private contractor Joe Wiseman. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm here this evening. We have reached a tentative agreement subject to the Board's approval of a resolution of the claim that the county currently has pending in Beaumont County Superior Court against Joe Wiseman and his company Environmental Infrastructure Consulting LLC. The proposed terms of the settlement are as follows. Mr. Wiseman, through his attorney, has agreed to provide a deposition and give truthful testimony concerning all matters involving his dealings with Buncombe County, officials of Buncombe County, and employees of Buncombe County, including production of receipts that he has in his custody or access to. As I've explained to you, this would probably only entail the items while he was in, uh, had his own company, that was Environmental Infrastructure. He has also agreed to provide testimony concerning dealings with those same group of folks while he was an employee of C D M and later C D M Smith. We currently have pending an outstanding subpoena due to C T C M to C D M Smith that has requested the production of all requests for reimbursement and reimbursement made by C D M Smith to Joe Wiseman while he was in their employ with regard to Buncombe County, as well as any expenditures that C D M Smith may have made directly for the benefit of anyone employed by Buncombe County or any elected official of Buncombe County. That is a matter that we're probably going to have to pursue in the court because they have refused to produce those items. After the, the deposition of Mr. Wiseman is subject to the approval, the Assistant U.S. Attorney for the Western District of North Carolina, Mr. Richard Edwards, um, and I have tried to reach Mr. Edwards, but he only returned, he'd been out of the country, only returned Monday, and I'm sure he's been busy, and he's not gotten back to me. I don't think it's going to be an issue, but nevertheless, it is a condition of getting that sworn testimony. Then Mr. Wiseman will pay to Buncombe County the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in exchange for a release and a dismissal with prejudice of any claims that we may have and a dismissal with prejudice of the counterclaims that his company, Environmental Infrastructure, asserted against Buncombe County. One of the reasons I'm recommending the hundred and fifty thousand, while the newspaper has reported numbers that we have contended we're entitled to are substantially larger, the settlements that we've reached with Ms. Green, Ms. Stone, and Mr. Creighton included sums that were attributable to the cost of these trips and other items, tickets to ball games and everything else, and in my opinion, Judge Conrad would have given Mr. Wiseman some credit for the sums that we have collected against those. Additionally, this will bring at least that matter to a conclusion, hopefully in somewhat of an expeditious manner, and would bring the total amount that we have actually collected once we get the hundred and fifty thousand to something over three million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The hundred and fifty will probably be paid around the end of January, and that is due to the fact that Mr. Wiseman is having to take it out of his IRA, and he will be fifty-nine and a half, I think, January the fifth, and if he draws it out before then, which probably couldn't be done anyway because of the logistics, there would be additional ten percent penalty that he would have to pay under federal law. So I agree with his lawyer that we could, we would wait until the end of January, realizing that his being in the federal system is going to take some time to get the papers in, papers out, to whomever has the IRA to get those funds.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to accept a proposed settlement of the civil suit between Buncombe County and Joe Wiseman for a sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as outlined by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? I would just like to say, Mr. Payne, on behalf of Buncombe County, I really appreciate your representation of the county in this matter, as well as the, the other legal representation that you have provided to the county as we have pursued efforts to recoup taxpayer money that was, that was misused fraudulently. So thank you, thank you on behalf of the county. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we come now to an update on the proposed comprehensive facility plan, and Ronnie Lunsford from General Services will be helping us out with this item.
Commissioners, before Mr. Lunsford gets started, I just wanted to give you a really brief update on the detention facility addition that I presented at the pre-meeting, the last pre-meeting. We're just continually, continuing to investigate that option internally, and we will be back before you when we have a recommendation for you. I did want to let you know, too, that we are implementing diversion programs currently, and so we're keeping track of the impact on those diversion programs. So just want to make you aware of those two items. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have a presentation up here shortly. There we go. Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Ronnie Lunsford. I'm the Facilities and Construction Coordinator with the General Services Department for Buncombe County, presenting tonight on behalf of our Director, Mike Mace, who's out of town. Like Sybil said, I'll be speaking with you tonight about a comprehensive facilities plan that we at General Services would like to develop for Buncombe County. Get started with a quick review of the agenda. I'm going to provide a little bit of background information about county-owned facilities. Talk about the scope of work that we envision that will be needed to develop this plan. Look at what we expect the key outcomes of the study to be. Discuss the process that'll get us to the final objective, and end with action requests to the Board. Brief background and overview of the cost to maintain county-owned buildings. The average age of our county-owned facilities is fifty years old. There's about nine and a quarter million dollars planned in capital projects. You can see our previous two years' maintenance costs there on the screen, and this year's tracking to be around seven hundred and forty-two thousand. We feel that a comprehensive facility plan could really help gain control of some of those costs and bring them down even lower than what they are. Looking at the scope of work involved in creating this plan, General Services has worked with A B Tech to develop a type of plan very similar to this for the Victoria Road campus, and will soon be doing one for the Inca Campus as well. Gives us a pretty good understanding of what all is involved in this study. The plan will look at each facility and its infrastructure related to factors such as exterior envelope, structural components, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, interior finishes, and it would also answer some important space planning questions, such as are we using our buildings efficiently, and if not, how can we improve them? What are our current and future space needs? Are there opportunities to improve customer service to the community? Are some of the aging buildings worth investing in, and if so, what is the cost of that? And are there opportunities to better match design with the needs of the community? One example that probably everybody knows of is tax collections offices, not easily accessible for citizens with parking in a pretty small lobby, so if there's ways to improve that, it's what we'd like to do. This is a quick list of twenty-six county-owned buildings that we plan on looking at, makes up around one point seven million square feet. There are also twelve libraries that we're going to put in as an option to the study, and the Library Director, Jim Blatton, is seeking grant money to try to cover the library's portion of those costs. As Jeremiah Leroy mentioned at the last meeting, General Services has worked with the Sustainability Office to develop his list of facilities that are candidates for the solar upsets, and so we're pretty confident that there are no conflicts between his list and the study we're trying to do as far as the buildings go. One interesting takeaway from this list of facilities is that over half of the square footage that we're developing a plan for is for facilities that were constructed between nineteen sixteen and nineteen forty-eight. Two key outcomes we'd like to see from the plan are recommendations for optimizing existing space and developing future space needs based on what, on the data that's collected. We'd also like to build out short and long-term capital needs lists based on the driving factors I mentioned earlier, so that we can strategically plan for those expenditures over time. General Services would like to prepare an R F Q, Request for Qualifications, in order to find qualified firms to assist in the development of this plan. We anticipate the R F Q process to take approximately six weeks, which gives us time to receive responses from the firms, negotiate with them, and hopefully return to the Board with a cost and a, hopefully a contract for that study. At that time, if approved by the Board, we'd anticipate approximately six months to develop the comprehensive facilities plan. So I'm here tonight to request the Board's approval for the General Services staff to move forward with this R F Q.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Lunsford. Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion to approve taking next steps on the process for the facility plan?
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to direct staff to move forward with a request for qualifications. Any further discussion?
Well, some of it has just been brought forward about A B Tech, I think, and all that, so I think we need a little more time before we give them the total approval. That hadn't been a month, so.
So question would be, so if we, if we approve the request for qualifications this evening, what other, does the Commission need to approve the company that's selected, or does that kind of roll forward at the staff level? Ms. Pender, will you talk us through the process?
That, that would come back to the Board. What we're asking today is actually put that, put together an R F P, put it on the street, and get qualified vendors. Then we'll bring that back to you for contract negotiations and see if you agree for us to move forward at that point.
Okay, so it will come back to the Board.
Yes, sir.
Before we select anybody. And the reference to, Mr. Lunsford, the reference to the A B Tech facility, you're simply saying that the, that the facility study that they're carrying out for the Inca Campus, that in some ways these are similar, they're not actually connected to each other, right?
Yes, sir. No, sir, they're not connected. We, General Services just helped A B Tech in facilitating that plan.
Right, they're doing a facility study for that property.
Yes, sir.
We want to do something similar for some of our properties.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, next up is the old Zuygner Pool Building, and Michael Frue is going to talk to us about some of the school's ideas for this property.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. Just to freshen your recollection, this has been a process about eleven years in the making with the old Zuygner Pool and two thousand and eight swap properties, and we've finally gotten to the point where we're ready to wrap this up and close out that transaction and do a release, and the one item of business remaining for the county was its promise in that original night, two thousand and nine agreement, was to demolish the old Zuygner Building. The Buncombe County School Board has determined that it would be in their best interest to convert that old Zuygner facility into a storage facility, and there were some concerns from this Board regarding the roof and the maintenance plan for that old structure and whether or not this was money well spent. So with that in mind, what we've done today is ask Mr. Clark Wyatt, who's Facilities Director with the schools, to come and answer those questions for the Board before your final consideration and hopefully approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Green.
This is Clark Wyatt.
Hey, Clark.
How are you? Good.
I feel like y'all should be wearing goggles or something.
Hey, all of this. Good afternoon. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the old Zuygner Pool.
I, well, I had one when we talked about this, when this got, idea got brought to us. I guess just the, the only other questions I had are, you know, just like we were talking about for some of these other county facilities, this is an older, you know, an older building. If it can be adaptively reused for other purposes, naturally, that sounds pretty positive, but do we have any information about what the, you know, what other maintenance needs there will be on that building if it is preserved rather than being, you know, taken down?
So basically, if, if we follow through with the plan, the building would be, we would tear a portion of it down, build an in-wall on the, on the pool building. The only thing remaining would be electricity in the building. We remove all heat, there would be no heat, just basically lights to be able to see. The roof on the structure, you know, the structure is sound. Ultimately, we'll need a new roof at some point. It's not leaking at this time. It's a coat of many colors, and it doesn't look that great, but it's not leaking, and we would use our Article forty, forty-two funds to put that in the process and replace that roof at some time when it needs it.
But the immediate work that would be done on the building is basically utilizing the funds that would have been used to demolish it will be used to accomplish the tasks that need to be done in the short term.
That's correct.
So is that a pretty, that a tradi, when I say traditional roof, is that, is that a shingle roof? I mean.
It's a shingle roof.
Yeah.
We would, we would more than likely go back with a metal, metal roof.
Right.
At the time, when we do that.
But it's not leaking now.
No.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? Is there a motion on this item?
I think it's a good use of the building, so I'll be happy to make the motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and I believe it's specifically to approve this resolution. Is that what we're approving? Is the resolution to do an interlocal agreement or to amend it? What exactly is the one which we need?
Yes, sir, the resolution would be to authorize the execution of the interlocal agreement. That's just the cooperation between the county and the schools to transfer the money and change the budget line item and authorize yourself or the county manager either to sign a release deed to close out any other obligations of either party with that original agreement from ten, eleven years ago.
And if I could, Chairman, just for the people that are in the room, there was ninety thousand dollars set aside, right, to.
Yeah, we had, uh, county has a line item for demolition, so part of this is to transfer that to, transfer to the schools for this particular purpose, to retrofit. Ninety thousand dollars in estimate from a while back to demolish the building would be transferred to the schools. They'd use that for this outfit, and they have fifteen thousand dollars in hand to do the rest of that estimated cost of a hundred and five thousand of immediate use.
Yeah, I just wanted people to know this money had already been set aside that we're talking about.
No new money. Yes, sir, already set aside.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Clark, and thank you, Michael. These are all new business items. No Commissioners had requested public comment on them, so unless we, unless we, if there's a, if there's a request and there's a sufficient number of Commissioners requesting it, we would do that as per.
Are you requesting that, Commissioner Presley?
I just aim someone.
I mean, if you are, I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll be okay with it.
Well, we've already passed it.
We have voted on it. And if anybody wants to comment on it, we will take public comment at the end of the meeting on any, on any items that people wish to comment on. The next item on the agenda are several budget amendments and Jennifer Barnett, our budget director, will present these items.
So, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm actually going to ask Matt Cable to do the introduction for the first budget amendment because it's paired with information related to the Affordable Housing Services Program recommended awards. So Matt's going to start and then I'll wrap up with a coinciding request for a budget amendment on the first one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I do have a presentation for you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to present information on the FY '20 Affordable Housing Services Program applications and recommended allocations. I'm going to walk through the process to date, the funding that has been identified as available. Briefly, I'm going to let Jennifer delve into that a little bit more at the end of the presentation. And then the allocations that were recommended by the Affordable Housing Committee of the Subcommittee of this Board. So just to give you an update on the process to date, we have, we provide public notice when we want to make a request for project proposals. That happened in, in late August, on August 25th. We had a brief application submittal window and did communicate directly with applicants that we regularly receive information about that application window becoming available at the same time that the notices were made in the newspaper. From the September 16th through the 24th, staff did an internal review using our score and evaluation sheet that is provided to the applicants, that is part of the application packet, so that they understood how they would be evaluated from a staff perspective. On October 1st, we first presented information to the Affordable Housing Committee on the applications. The committee again met on November 5th, at which point the committee made formal recommendations for the allocation of funding. Again, I'm just going to briefly touch on, there are 1,99,541 dollars that are projected to be available for use in this allocation round, including the 2020 budgeted amount of 631,000 as well as other dollars that include program income and then prior year allocated funds that will be reallocated as they were unused by the recipients in prior We did receive a total request of 1.719 million, so our request did exceed the amount of funding available in this cycle. So there were decisions that needed to be made about recommending allocation levels in comparison to the requested amounts. And this is a summary of the recommendations that were made by the Affordable Housing Committee. There will be five external projects that are recommended for funding and I'll go over each of those in more detail as well as one internal, so Buncombe County operated program, which is the manufactured home removal program, which received a recommendation for funding in the 2020 year. The first project, known as Jasper, is proposed by project applicant Jasper Homestead Incorporated. It is a multifamily-for-rent construction project, so this is a request for construction loan funding. Total units in the project are 84 units. The total project cost is just over 14 million dollars and there are nearing 9 million dollars in external committed funds, including low-income housing tax credit and a prior home match award from Buncombe County. The applicant did request 600,000 dollars in funding and loan funding and the applicant was present during the Affordable Housing Committee, at which point the committee made a recommendation to provide a loan in the amount of 496,256 dollars and the applicant determined that that would be an acceptable amount of loan funding, that they could leverage other funding to fill in the gap between their ask and the amount the committee recommended. The second project is Two Restaurant Court. This is also a multifamily-for-rent project. This project would include 40 units. These are single-family units, excuse me, one-bedroom units. They are apartment complex. Total project cost for this project is 3.645 million. They have 475,000 dollars in equity on the property and the prod, the funding request was 400,000 dollars. The committee is recommending funding level at 296,334 dollars. And again, that's a construction loan, a multifamily-for-rent construction loan. The next two projects are emergency repair. The first is.
Excuse me, can I ask one question just real quick as we're going through these? Can you go back to the last one, please? The Two Restaurant Court funding, that 296, 296,000, it's not just a construction loan, right? Like, there's a term loan that goes with that too. Isn't that correct?
So all of our construction loans are, they're a 15-year term at a 2% rate. So that's the, the terms of our loan that we can provide.
Right.
And they will be leveraging other loan funds in order to achieve that.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that it's not just repaid after the construction's complete. It's a long-term loan.
Right. And it's ongoing and they pay an annual payment to us over the course of the entire loan.
And Jasper's the same terms.
Yes, fully amortizing. So there were two emergency repair applicants, one being MHO. This funding request was for 300,000 dollars to support emergency repair through their particular program. The Affordable Housing Committee recommended providing 154,356 dollars to support that program. That would support 25 units at an average of around 6250 per unit. There was a second applicant and in this cycle was recommended that Habitat for Humanity and their emergency repair program also receive funding. They had requested 150,000 dollars for their program and the committee is recommending 77,177 dollars.
I just want to make a comment on those two, two slides just, just briefly. You know, when we look at the previous one where there's 66, you know, people on the waiting list and 20, this would help 25 people and then the other one is, would help 13 people. So some people might think that this is, I mean, that it's not really doing a lot. But what you're basically doing is saving these, most of these you're saving their home and because they have a situation where it's, most are heating-related or leak-related or, you know, something like that.
Right.
You're really making a difference. I, I, you know, you're really making a difference in, in these individuals, so.
And the program has specific guidelines and they will describe exactly how they will use the funds in the application, but they're generally serious safety conditions, heating, roof, electrical, plumbing, repairs, significant that would otherwise make the, the home uninhabitable or dangerous to live in. And so this particular program, just to, to make that comparison, the Habitat program, each emergency repair is proposed an average expenditure of 6,000, so they were comparable in cost. The MHO program targets residents with area median income at 50% or less, where the Habitat project is targeting 70% or less, so they target a slightly different group. And Habitat also requires participation from their applicants as well. So there are a little bit of variance in how they operate their programs, but the general costs are similar and the deliverables are similar. And then there is a recommendation for tenant-based rental assistance funding. This was a request from Evelyn Charities. The initial request was for 60,000 dollars in Affordable Housing Services Program funds and the committee recommended providing 29,835 dollars. That would generally support 38 families with tenant-based rental assistance. This program is, is kind of a gap program. It fills in where federal dollars aren't really available through DHHS and other means, particularly for single adults. So this is a targeted program there. And then finally, the manufactured home removal program. These funds are not necessarily part of the Affordable Housing Services Program, but we utilize that budget line to provide support for this county-operated program. And the request typically has been 49,250 based on the other awards and the amounts that were given. We came close to that regular allocation with the recommendation of 45,584 dollars and that would support roughly 18 manufactured home removals in the county over the course of the fiscal year 2020. And again, this is a summary of all the recommendations. The total amount, just as a, as a piece of information, for the multifamily construction, so these would be construction loans repayable to the county that, that funding would return to us over the course of the next 15 years, were 792,590 dollars. The grant funding for emergency repair would be 231,533 dollars for both programs combined together. And then I will turn it over to Jennifer so she can walk through the budget amendment items and then I'll certainly be happy to answer questions about the allocation process or the recommendations as well.
And so in the information provided to you in your packet, we actually will, will need two separate actions. So the first request would be your approval to fund, to authorize these particular awards. But I will also review our request related to the budget amendment. You heard Matt speak to the budgeted dollars and the total amount that would be required for this particular request. What I'll make note of is that the 631,045 dollars is already budgeted. It's part of, was part of the fiscal year 2020 adopted budget. So the other dollars we are requesting to realign from fiscal year 2014 award, again, those were rescinded dollars, so unspent funds. The fiscal year 2018, so those two amounts were 18,835 and 66,542. Same with a fiscal year 2019, unused dollars for 125,000. The net increase or the net change in our request for the budget amendment is to be able to budget the revenues that we've received already in program income. So prior loans, we receive payments and receive those as revenues. So that dollar amount has been 258,119 dollars. So there's no new county money needed for this. We just need to request that we realign those dollars and then budget revenue that we've already received for program income to make this total budget available if you were to award these particular projects.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Is anyone going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval. So.
The first motion is to approve the projects recommended by the committee. So the first, the first motion is to approve the projects that have been recommended, which in the, the total investment associated with that is 1,99,542 dollars. So, and then second, we'll do a budget amendment.
Okay. So I'm going to make the motion for the projects being on the, serving on the board with, as on the board, but on the committee with Brownie, Chairman Newman and, Chairman Newman and Commissioner Edwards. How's that? Is that better? There have been lengthy discussions about, about these. So, so I'm comfortable with the, you know, with the recommendation as it's.
And I second that.
All right. We've got a motion in the second to approve the authorization of these projects. Further discussion from the commission? So, so just a reminder to the board, so items under new business, we'll take public comment on them if there's a public hearing or if two Commissioners request it. So that's our.
One.
Okay. Does anyone else want to take public comment on this?
I mean, that's fine. I'll be okay with it.
Okay. It's fine. All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion regarding the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations? And if you want to comment, go ahead and comment on the budget amendment too that will likely follow.
I'd like to thank the young lady because I, she and I had a discussion before the meeting on budgets and so forth, but I just wanted to pass some thoughts along. I would like to see some coordination between these projects of refabbing houses that need help and destruction of old mobile homes between AB Tech and the county, because you're always looking for ways to coordinate things. And you do have students at AB Tech just learning plumbing, electrical, carpentry. I think, or you should have them. If you don't, I want to know why and start a program like that so that these folks could be used and learning while they're on the trading and on, being trained for the job. And I, I noticed that Commissioner Frye said they don't have those programs there. Well, if they don't, something is amiss in the management of the county and AB Tech for not seeing that that happens because you folks do control the budget and that will stretch the dollars further by doing that. Also with your old trailers, they can be turned into mobile stages. They could also be taken in to a construction facility and you can build another modular home on them that would be the property of, of nonprofits since we got plenty of those going around. And that could be taken out and let someone live in it till someone dies. You bring it back, clean it out again, put it back out. So that way you're investing in creating affordable housing rather than just doing something and leaving it alone. And South Carolina did this, but the last time I discussed that with a previous committee chair, a commissioner who was the head of AB Tech, therefore you knew who I was talking to, said they couldn't do it. Well, very obviously they're not training carpenters and electricians either, so something is awry and we need some very strong leadership to coordinate and multiply our dollars. Thank you very much and thank the young lady for her explanation before the meeting.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the authorization of these projects? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we need a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the staff in the staff report. I'll make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Further discussion?
I'd just make a comment. I think the, I think the committee, our new Affordable Housing Committee is off to a good start, still pretty new. We've had really good discussions and I think it's going to serve, serve the commission well in the long run. We're still kind of trying to figure out all the different things we want to try to get done there, but I think it's been a good process. It's not easy. There's, as in a lot of these situations, there are a lot more good projects than, than we had funding to allocate. So, so tough decisions around allocation of finite resources, but I think the recommendations are good. Most of the, you know, the larger projects that really deliver a lot of new affordable units, we think will get done based on the recommendations that are here. So, anyway, just want to say thanks to the folks serving on the commission and the staff who are, who are helping us there. So.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we come to the School Capital Commission budget items.
Yes, so the second new business budget amendment item request is related to our public school capital needs fund. As routine, so on an annual basis, the School Capital Fund Commission met on October 21st, requesting and approving a recommendation to bring forward to this board, projects totaling 17 million dollars. It is 5 million dollars being recommended for Asheville City Schools for a total of four projects and for Buncombe County Schools, a total of 12 million dollars for 11 projects. The request today is to provide us with the ability to budget the expenditures in the amounts indicated for each project with the anticipation that the revenues. amounts indicated for each project, with the anticipation that the revenues will be future bond proceeds. And the debt service payments, once those come due, will be paid from the Article 39 sales tax, which is designated for school capital funding.
And do we need to approve this in the same manner that we did the last one with the first motion to approve the projects and the total amount of funding, followed by a budget amendment, or can we just make it all one motion?
I think in this particular instance, because the budget amendment outlines each individual projects with the associated dollar amounts, you're good to do that.
Okay, so we can just approve a budget amendment in that list to all the projects in it. All right, great. Commissioners, is there any questions or a motion regarding the recommended School Capital Commission FY 2021 capital projects?
I move approval.
Second.
All right, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say a little bit about it. So I happen to be on this, you know, committee with Chairman Newman and some other people that really care about the community, but this is a, this is a hard, hard one because of the list is incredible on what needs to be done, you know, with the schools. And I, I like the way it ended up. I think it's very, you know, there's a lot of equity in there for, for the city as well as the county schools. And the, the other thing is that, you know, these numbers are just like the other, other committee, I mean, they were, there was, there was a lot of conversation and a lot of great information provided, you know, to us to bring this to the board this evening. And I think it's a, I mean, if you look at, look at the county, it's all over the county. And, and if you look at the city, there, there was some, there was some money needed at, at Asheville High School and, and Montford, and these were, these, these had to be done. These, these were pretty emergency situations. But I'm glad with the equity all over the county and, and the city and the way it turned out, so.
Any other comments from commissioners or questions? Yes, sir.
Got one. I agree with Commissioner Belcher, a lot of this much needed, but just let people that don't know the month, you know, it's all about the roof, which we know that's the most important classroom, but could you tell us a little bit about the Montford retaining wall?
We sure can.
Okay, and everyone else.
I'll, I'll let the chairman.
Yeah, we have, you know, this is, in the context of, you know, this is seventeen million dollars of recommended funding in this package. So in the big scheme of things, there's a lot of other projects that are a lot more expensive, but we spent a lot of time on this one because it is for a retaining wall. And so, I mean, the short version of it is that at this campus, it used to be referred to as the Randolph Elementary School, now it's North Star, there's a, there's a retaining wall that basically supports the, the parking lot, and it's old, and it's failing, and it's got to be replaced. And it's a fairly lengthy section. And so the, you know, the estimated price to do it is, you know, it's, it's not an inexpensive project, but it's, we did spend a lot of time on it at the commission level, and based on the feedback from the staff from the county and the city schools who have been looking at this, it's very clear that it must be replaced, it will fail if we don't fix it. Basically, it could, it would present a real safety risk. So it's a project that, that needs to be done.
Is that the retaining wall on Gudger Street?
That's correct, yep.
They were talking about that five years ago, I was on the school board, so.
We, we cannot, we cannot wait any longer, it needs to be done.
Yeah, it's past, yeah, it's past time.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, terrific. Next item on the, on our list is the budget amendment for renewal of the Methodist Home for Children grant.
Yes, this request is related to our Grant Projects Fund. So for the last few fiscal years, we have been in receipt of funding from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety has renewed contract funding to be provided in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. I will note that Buncombe County is a pass-through for this funding. We provide that directly to the Methodist Home for Children, who is the recipient. They go through an application process with the state, so the state actually provides the oversight of that contract for this particular program, and we are the, the pass-through funding entity for it. What I'll just provide you with a brief piece of information around what this contract provides, provides services for temporary crisis care, assessment, and therapeutic residential services as a dispositional alternative defined in North Carolina General Statute for Level Two adjudicated male and female youth. If you will recall, the facility at, I do believe, Twenty Lees Creek, used to be at the Juvenile Detention Center. This is now what the state hopes to be a regional approach to a, to an alternative for secure custody for these, for these youth. So this is pass-through funding. We're requesting to be able to budget the anticipated revenues and the expenditures to pay back out through to the Methodist Home for Children.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Commissioners, is there a motion on this item?
No, someone.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment to facilitate this pass-through grant to the Methodist Home for Children, as outlined in the staff report. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the next item is the Safer Together Grant.
Yes, this is a requested budget amendment, also in association with our Grant Projects Fund. Max is going to pull up a slide for me to be able to reference as an introduction to this budget amendment request. On November the fifth, during your pre-meeting, you heard from our Health and Human Services Director, Stoney Blevins, in conjunction with Jan Shepherd, the Public Health Director, information related to this specific grant. What I would like to do is to include as part of the budget amendment request, an acknowledgement that if you approve the budget amendment, that we are also accepting the grant award, which I will give the details about in just a moment, and that we also are acknowledging that there are two grant-funded positions in association with the grant, which are outlined on the screen. And so the first one would be planned to begin January first of 2020 as a half-time benefited grants coordinator position. And then a second one that would begin July first of 20 as a full-time certified medical professional. My understanding is, is that there is still some discussion as to what type of medical professional that would be, but this proposed budget amendment in terms of either an EMT or a nurse, to be able to perform or fulfill the duties as outlined in the grant. I know that Amy Upham and Stoney are both here to answer any specific questions around the grant, but the budget amendment request would be to accept and to budget the grant funding of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and three dollars for the associated operating and salaries and benefits. Also acknowledging that seventy-three thousand and six dollars is a county share. Our plan is to work with Health and Human Services to identify that seventy-three thousand and six dollars out of their fiscal year budget to pair with that grant funding and move it to the grants fund. So if you have any specific questions around the grant, they are here, and then if you have any questions around the budget amendment request, I can answer those.
I have, I have one question. Can you give a little bit more detail on the contract and professional services, contracted services? It's a big, it's a big bulk of the money.
I'm going to let Amy Upham speak to that.
Thanks.
Thank you, commissioners. So the contracted professional services is for a post overdose response team, and typically in other municipalities, that includes a variety of individuals, two or three going out in a team. And for our team, that's going to be a peer support specialist full-time as a case manager, a counselor, who is going to be a mental health licensed counselor. And then some of that money is actually for fifteen housing slots per year for people in recovery. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just thinking in the future that it'd be, it'd be good to have that detail broken out, because that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big amount, you know, and it'd just be good to have that broken out, you know, so.
Sure.
And I understand it's pass-through money, but we just want to make sure it's being used as efficiently as possible, and I know very little, you know, need to know more, but very little about, you know, the, you know, the, these professionals that will be in, in the jobs they'll be doing. So I'd like to, I'd like to know more, but I think any, that we need to try to have a little bit more detail.
Okay, would you like that now, in terms of the mental health professionals and the housing units?
I would like it in follow-up.
Follow-up, okay.
I don't want to hold up, I don't want to hold up the action tonight, but I would like the detail sent.
Sure thing.
You know, you're going to send it to me, you got to send it to everybody, so.
Okay, can do.
I would like that, yes.
And the other thing I'd really like to know is, how long is this grant good for, and then how long would it be before Buncombe County'd have to pick it up to pay this person?
It is a three-year grant, and in the grant proposal, which we wrote, and in the grant justification form, the idea is to bring this back in three years, hopefully show some good outcomes, and use it as another approach to community paramedicine, which I know the commissioners considered a couple of years ago. It's working well in other counties, and so we're using this, these grant dollars to hopefully start that, that program and maybe begin the conversation if it's effective, and hopefully it will be.
And we just want to make, you know, these are, these are basically temporary jobs, to Commissioner Frye's point, these are temporary jobs unless a grant is, we receive another grant, and then if we do, then you'll, that will come back before us, and we would have to approve it again, and the people that are hired in these positions understand that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Great. Very good. Any other questions? All right. So Jennifer, could you summarize again how you would like this motion framed?
I'm going to look to, I'm going to look to Heather, just because in the budget amendment itself, while the, the narrative description doesn't specifically address the positions, so maybe it actually would be good if they could approve grant-funded positions separately, and then, then do a motion and approval of the budget amendment, even though, yes, separately.
Commissioners, do you want to accept the grant and then approve the budget positions? That will be helpful.
Okay, so first you want us to accept, to approve acceptance of the grant?
Yes.
And to fund the positions separately?
Yes.
The second would be to fund the positions?
Right, because we're asking specifically to add positions to our personnel policy, which would be a half-time position starting in January and a full-time position as well in July.
Okay. All right, commissioners, is there a motion to approve acceptance of the Safer Together Grant?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and second, is there a motion to approve the creation of the staff positions described in the staff report?
I'm going to make a motion to approve that, just with the statement that we, in the future, make sure we have that detail in there.
Okay. Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, and last, is there approval of the associated budget amendment?
Three? So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the associated budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, thank you. All right, and the last budget amendment is related to the Buncombe County Detention Facility and the Strategic Community Opioid Response Program that we've discussed at several of our recent commission meetings. And who is presenting on this item? You, Jennifer, again, great, thank you so much. And I want to acknowledge that Sheriff Quentin Miller has joined us. Sheriff, great to see you, thank you for being with us.
Yes, I was also wanting to acknowledge that Sheriff Miller is present, as well as Sarah Gaetan and Sherri Powers, I think is still here, from the sheriff's office, if there are any specific questions related to the grant. I, I will note that a presentation outlining the detention-based medication-assisted treatment program was made to the commission on May 21st, and that the resolution adopting support of the detention MAT program was done on August the 20th of 2019. So we're bringing forward this budget amendment request to you this evening, and actually, I think, following the same precedent as before, this grant also includes the request for a grant-funded position. And I will note that since the time of the posting of this particular item, we do note, or the request was for a program director position and a salary grade of seventy-three, and I need to request a technical correction in that as we hear the rest of this, but that position request will be for an administrative officer two and a salary grade of seventy-two. So just to note that as you are hearing this.
Well, we have to amend, do that as an amendment when we, because we're not, we're not.
If you, I'll let Mike or Heather speak to that, but.
You were talking about the position.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think if you approve it as that. Sorry. I think if you approve.
Prove that tonight as written, that should, that should suffice it.
It's, it's written as seventy-three.
It's written at seventy-three, and it's going to be seventy-two. Well, just when you make the motion, say seventy-two, seventy-three.
And the classification is different, it's an administrative officer two. We apologize for that change, but we needed to make sure we had the right classification and salary request. But I'll give a little bit of background, particularly related to the request for the budget. So the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has partnered with our Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, allocating funding in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars coming through our local LME, so Via Health, for the purposes of developing a medication-assisted treatment program in the detention facility. So the one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars comes directly to Buncombe County. There are some additional dollars allocated to RHA and Sunrise in our community, who will be part of a multi-disciplinary team providing this program in the detention facility. So the one hundred and sixty-one eight ninety will be used for salary and benefits, operating expenses, and service delivery costs. We are requesting to be able to budget the anticipated revenues, the grant revenue, in, in the amount of one sixty-one eight ninety, and then the associated expenditures as outlined in the budget amendment for salary and wages operating. So if there are any specific questions around that.
Okay, I guess just like with the other ones, I'm a little unclear on what exactly is needed, do we need to accept the grant and then approve the position, as we'll update the language on that, and then do a budget amendment? So we need three different motions on this one as well, okay?
Question on that one. This grant revenue, is that Buncombe County money, or?
It is not Buncombe County money. It is being provided from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to Via Health, and Via Health is passing that through to Buncombe County in that amount.
It's passed through, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I think our first motion is to approve acceptance of the grant, and the grant to the county is in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
I move that we accept the grant.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The second is we need to approve the staff position that will be funded through this. And again, just so we get this right, Jennifer, could you just state for us?
Sure.
What the staff position is that will be funded?
It is an administrative officer two classification with a salary grade of seventy-two, and that's an exempt position.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the creation of the staff position as described by our staff?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and lastly, is there a motion to approve the budget amendment to make this effective?
I move to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jennifer, thank you for walking us, walking us through all of that. All right, that concludes all the budget amendments we needed to take care of this evening. We do have some board appointments. On the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, there are three vacancies currently.
So I recommend Scott McLean and Sarah Hutchinson.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now come to general public comment, but I do want to let folks know that we are going to plan on, also after we take public comment, there is a need for an additional closed session, which our staff will tell us about in just a minute. So we'll do that after public comment. And we do not anticipate taking any action following the closed session. So once we come back from that, our, we expect to simply adjourn, but I just wanted to let folks know about that. All right, so public comment. Yes, ma'am, would you like to start us off? And when you come up, you're gonna have three minutes to speak to the board, you're gonna get some lights. When you get an orange light, that means you've got 30 seconds left, I think. And when you get a red light, it means your time's up. And we ask everyone to conclude their comments at that time, as we want to give everyone the same amount of time. So, let us know your name, and thank you for being with us.
Good evening, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. My name is Ann Seaman, and I live in Montreat. Tonight, I'd like to thank you for your unanimous support of the opioid program of the COPE Grant and also the MAT jail program. Really excited about the Safer Together program that you have approved because of the overdose response team that will now use local peers to provide one-on-one support. These peers have lived experience. It's an incalculable asset when speaking to someone with opioid dependency. The housing piece of this grant is a game changer. By offering stable housing and medication to the vulnerable population recently released detainees, you lessen the chance of a fatal poisoning. Currently, most sober homes do not allow residents to participate in any sort of opioid replacement therapy. This gaping hole in the network of group homes is shameful. This new grant, Safer Together, will eliminate this discriminatory hurdle by housing up to 15 persons per year and provide the medication. And I'm sorry for my voice, it's how it is when I public speak. The most exciting piece for me, however, is the funding of a central point person, something I have been advocating for a year. This position will not only streamline the county efforts, it will also help in coordinating with our strategic partners. Creating a minimum standard of care will also help guide patients to programs and facilities by using the latest and most successful methods to treat drug dependency, and this coordinator can help that. Lastly, I would be remiss if I did not express my sincere thanks to our county's Health and Human Services. Jan Shepard and Stoney Blevins have been willing to bring their resources to bear in fighting this epidemic. The application for this grant could not have happened without their support. And Amy Upham is to be congratulated for authoring this highly competitive DOJ grant application. It was her competent work that secured this award for nearly $900,000. She also wrote a successful State Department of Health and Human Services grant application. This state award is for $275,000 and will be used to link released detainees from the county jail to medical care and support. Her position has been key to enhancing our county's response. Having her as a central point of contact has benefited us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann. Thanks for, for sharing your thoughts on this, and thank you for all of your advocacy on these important, this important work in the community. Yes, ma'am?
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Ellie Richard, and I'm here as a homeowner who would, who will be impacted by the Crossroads mega-development proposed by a Charlotte investment company, a company that is only looking at the money to be made, not at the quality of life for our citizens. However, more so, I'm here as a citizen who has been for many years, and more now than ever, concerned about our lack of a comprehensive plan that might guide growth in a responsible manner. The Crossroads developer knows there is little to no plan. That's why they believe they can build the mega-monstrosity here, where the land is surrounded by the city of Asheville, where they can hop on the city water, city sewer, benefit from quick access to West Asheville and Asheville, and only pay county taxes. Asheville and Buncombe are changing at light speed, and our government and infrastructure are not and will not keep up in the way we, in the ways we need, unless a comprehensive plan is created by our community and transparently adhered to, adhered to by our, our government. As for the proposed Crossroads development, I think you're all familiar with the numbers. 802 residential units, 120,000 square feet of commercial property, 14,400 square feet of retail, 50,400 square feet of office space, and 64,000 square feet of self-storage. The negative impacts of this project are off the charts. The environmental concerns I'll leave to other people to represent. First of all, it contains no, that, read that as zero affordable housing, nor what is termed workforce housing, which I've read is actually a high priority of this board. As I read the very confusing zoning ordinance of Buncombe County, I must ask, is it accurate that a dwelling unit must not contain over five persons that are considered family? Or, what does Page 6 refer to? Who exactly in the county would enforce the number of people living in any or all of the proposed 802 dwelling units in this proposal? Along those lines, who exactly would make sure that any, some, most, or all of these units were not used as vacation rentals? Who in the county would look out for that? The county states that safety is a high, if not the highest, priority. If so, what would be, what would a project of this magnitude do to the two-lane road, South Bear Creek, if there were an emergency? If EMS, the fire department, law enforcement were to be needed? The road is already crowded with traffic going toward highways and toward downtown West Asheville. What if, as in 2018, 2019, there was flooding on our access roads, such as Brevard Road? And I know that this is actually covered by INCA Fire Department, so you can kind of do the access. A hundred-year flood map is actually irrelevant at this point. I'm not even focusing, in closing.
Ellie, I'm sorry, your time's up. I forgot to ask you to stop, okay? Thank you for being here, though, but I do need to ask you to stop. We're giving everyone the same amount of time, right? So, thank you.
I do have one point, Brownie, I really.
Ellie, Ellie, I'm, I'll handle it.
Our Board of Adjustment just received a letter from the Chamber of Commerce regarding this. Our Board of Adjustment is being pandered to.
All right, thanks. Sorry, we just wanted to treat everyone the same in this public comment. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. This is a good example right here with this lady. Yuns are not doing their job. You're cutting the throat of the taxpayers. You're cutting the public comment out, and you're just as guilty as Republicans as you are Democrats. Yuns are all guilty. Yuns are cutting us out. Yuns have voted on all kinds of things today without input. That is absolutely wrong. You need to change something here. It's getting too political. I do have something to say about domestic violence. I've said it when they were here talking about it. I've talked about the Justice Center. I've talked about it for a long time about what's going on. Well, Judge Hill is finally getting some interaction here, in the newspaper, actually. He's questioning the numbers from these nonprofits, especially HelpMate. And I'm glad he has, because I've seen it, and it's not right. If I can see it, I'm glad the judge is seeing it. Well, let's go a little further. A good example is Cherokee County. Think about what happened in Cherokee County with DSS and the Health and Human Service. How's that all swept under the rug? What's that called? It's called child trafficking. And it gets even deeper than that. Yuns better wake up and listen, or this county's gonna be sued out the yanging, and the state ain't gonna save you either. The county is gonna be responsible. Do you think these numbers that Judge Hill is questioning about domestic violence is just about domestic violences? No. These numbers are going up with these nonprofits on the other end. We're not questioning the 480 that Judge Hill was talking about exactly, or the lower numbers in the five years he's talked about. We're talking about the big numbers that you see that is coming through these nonprofits. Where are they going when they get talked to? They're going into the Department of Social Service. They're being dispersed into all these agencies and all these nonprofits, and everybody is profiting off of these children, and that is called child trafficking. Now, if you don't understand what child trafficking is, you need to, because one of your mandates as Commissioners is protecting the health, safety, and the welfare. And I want you to listen to the word "welfare." If you never get this anymore, the welfare of our children and our adults means something. You need to pay attention and don't just throw your hand up and say, "Well, DSS, if the State Department is taking care of it." No. You got it wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Yelton?
Guess I'll be the cleanup batter. There's a lot to clean up. I think there's a phrase that you all need to put in your brain. Necessity is the mother of intervention. Five years, you discuss a wall that's about to fall, and now you finally fix it, the fallen. Remember CTS? I think yours truly told everybody about that. And Brownie, since you're such a big environmentalist, you should have been keeping up with that. But I got a call today to be at the Board of Elections meeting, which is held at 4:30. Very close to the time of this meeting. And I was told that there's gonna be a move with the Board of Elections to ignore the state's ruling on districts for Asheville, that the city of Asheville is gonna keep it like it is. So you're gonna have that little battle coming up, which will create some devices, again, between the city and the county. Because the city is creeping into the county. And I agree with that woman. She has a right to say what she wants to say, but I don't agree with her that a house outside the city limits doesn't pay for its water. It pays two times the water bill, which also affects the sewer bill. Those folks are paying, that's right, two times the water bill the minute you cross that one little imaginary line there. I proposed a solution to that, but you know something? My solutions don't come into effect until about two, or three, or four, or five years later, which is fine with me, which is what I do up here. And yeah, it's amazing to me that you all don't realize when you ignore saying, "Is there anyone like to speak?" I know you don't want me speaking all the time, but that's all right. I'm gonna speak every chance I get, and I'll make a fool of you for not letting me speak when you should. But when you don't take public comment on everything you vote on, what are you saying to the people? You're saying, "I don't give a rat's butt about what they think." And that lady right there? She is a concerned person. Don't agree with some of the things she said, but folks, she is concerned about her community. And concern is something that you cannot get by electing somebody to office. They either got it, or they don't have it. And by the way, you're supposed to speak into the mic, for those of you that have a problem with it, because he's got them, they're real sensitive, so I have to stand back, because I don't need a mic anyway. And the only reason I'm doing this is just to aggravate the heck out of you, because I got 14 seconds left, and you're gonna have to look at me for 12 seconds and think, and remember, Joe, what I gave you. Keep an eye out for corruption. It's there. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thanks so much. We do have a need for an additional closed session. Who can talk to us about the purpose of that?
I just need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318, or dash 318.11A4, to discuss matters related to an economic development item with, in relation to this public body.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion and a second to go into closed session. Before we vote on that, I neglected to just announce that our next county commissioner meeting will be at 3:00 PM on December 3rd. We'll have the Commissioners' pre-meeting at 200 College Street. And then at 5:00 PM that same day will be the Commissioners' next regular meeting. So just wanted to announce that before we go into closed session.
Before you go into closed session, I'd like to take a minute to introduce our HR Director that has been here with us. Is that all right?
Sure, please do.
So Sharon, would you stand for a minute, please? So Sharon Burke joined Buncombe County yesterday as our HR Director. She's coming to us from Texas, Midland, Texas. She works, Sharon excels at developing existing talent, and she focuses on growing organizations by creating opportunities for employee engagement and relations, and building a culture of strategic talent development and innovation. So I just wanted to recognize her tonight before we go into closed session, so.
Great, thank you so much. Welcome, Sharon. We're so glad to have you as part of the team. All right, all in favor of the motion to go into closed session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And as I mentioned earlier, we do not anticipate taking any action. This evening, when we come back from closed session, we will simply adjourn.